Is to adjourn the regular meeting to conduct a public hearing on the tentative FY22 district budget. So can I please have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting and conduct a public hearing on the FY22 budget?
So moved.
Let the, oh, sorry. So moved. And our second, can we please have a roll call vote, Mr. Secretary?
Yes. Ms. Boosdy, Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Linoy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes. Okay, we are going into our public hearing at 7:02 PM. And I think we have a presentation from Mr. Fair.
We do. So over the last month, since the board first heard the tentative budget, we have met and refined that budget. And this evening, Mr. Fair is prepared to present the budget and answer any board questions that you might have. So, Mr. Fair, you want to address the board, please?
Trying to get the presentation up on the screen here. Okay, as Dr. Whitaker said, the last month has essentially been attempting to refine as best as possible those tentative budget numbers. The tentative budget. Our usual practice is that we try and have as little changes as possible between tentative and final. We had that month to refine things, but really not change things a whole lot. Over the course of last year, you know, that's been, as things change more rapidly than they had in previous years, we've had to be careful and make sure that we have all our ducks in a row and that we're able to give you guys the most accurate numbers as possible. This year, there was one huge substantial change that happened between the tentative and final. This is similar to the graph or the chart I showed last month, but we're seeing now a 14.7% jump in revenues this year, largely due to the recent numbers that we got from the county about our CPPRT. So what CPPRT is? It's a corporate replacement tax. Years ago, you used to be able to tax personal property and corporations in the, in the district, and all over the Cook County. Now you're not able to do that. They came up with a replacement tax with just about 2.5% on sales for corporations. Because we have so much corporation, industry, commercial residence, or commercial and industry in the district, we're seeing about 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars from those, from that area this year, which is about 10% of our total budget. It's a huge number. Last year, we saw a much larger, we had seen for a number of years anywhere between 700 and 900,000 dollars. Last year, even though everything was going on with COVID, we saw 1.1 million dollar jump. Now we're seeing a one, a jump up to 1.3. And the initial projections, I put about 800,000, just to be conservative, based on previous years. But as we're seeing right now, the, like data anywhere, if you look, you know, you go back five years and try and make anything out of data from last year, it's, it's very inaccurate right now. So we're doing the best of what we can. But that was a huge change. We finalized insurance enrollment and hiring, which again is another fluctuation that we'll see at the start of the year. But this was the biggest thing that turned about a, I mean, we were looking at about a 400 to 500,000 dollar deficit originally. Now it's at about a $32,000 deficit. I made the comments of finance committee and, you know, both Mr. Guliana and Mr. Sherman being relatively new to the committee, our tradition has been to be extraordinarily conservative in our projections and then to come back and be able to give line item rationale as to why things were changed or were different than we budgeted originally. And that's how we intend to, intend to do this going forward. Two, the largest expenditures in the district, both salaries and insurance continue to outpace revenues as it refers to local revenues. But as a whole, we're seeing a huge jump in revenues because of both CPPRT and also federal dollars. We talked about that last month as well, on ESSER funds. A good thing for our, our taxpayers, and I continue to mention this, we still have the second lowest tax rate of all 29 North Cook Elementary districts because of that commercial property in our, in our township or our district. I touched on these in the board packet. I went through an extensive narrative about each one of these topics. But again, ESSER funding, our EAV went up again about seven and a half percent, which is the property value in our district, which will then bring our tax rate down. CPI, that is trending upward, and that's going to help us as far as revenue from local property taxes going forward. Property tax appeals, we continue to get, the, the bad thing about the commercial property in our district is that we get hit hard with property tax appeals from industry. There is legislation going out there right now. We're, we're going to be able to recoup that in the future. That hasn't been finalized, that hasn't been finalized yet, but we're still waiting to hear the details. But that'll be something to be brought to the board when we talk about the levy in November, December. Salaries and personnel plan, our insurance costs continue to be the largest drivers of our budget. We've continued to invest in things like district wellness to try and drive down long-term insurance costs. We had a very large investment this year in technology infrastructure for a couple of reasons. There was lifecycle replacements that we have, as well as we wanted to be prepared in case there was ever a chance for remote learning again, to make sure that we reinforced everything that we needed to be in place. Our facility plan, as we've talked about for a number of board meetings, that's going to be a huge driver going forward, not necessarily in this year. Currently, we, we don't have a lot budgeted as far as huge projects goes within the building. But that'll be, that'll come, actually come up in the spring. We talk about amending the budget based on what the board decides for construction. And moving back to normal, you know, I mentioned again, how much are we going to be able to glean off last year's numbers? How much is this going to be? How normal a year is this going to be? We'll find out. That's what it looks like as far as our operating funds. Again, that's our education, O and M, transportation and working cash. We have about 1.7 alone in working cash. You know, the talk again has been to use a large amount of that in whatever construction project we decide to go on, to go with. The blue bars there are the revenues, the red are the expenditures. 18, 19, 20, and 21 are the final numbers. 22 is obviously the budget. And then that green line is the operating fund balance. We're at about 122% right now. The board policy is 75%, and we're going to use that board policy to dictate how we balance financing of the projects going forward. The next step, we'll submit all this with the county clerk and submit the budget, the approved board budget to the ISB. October, we'll look at financial projections, and then maybe November in lockstep with the, whatever financing, we'll talk about that later tonight. We'll have the annual financial report and the audit in October as well. And that's, we do that every year. November 21, we'll present the levy and we'll talk about construction financing again. December 21, we'll submit the levy. And then 23 will, or 22, January 22, we'll begin FY23 budget preparations already. And then spring, we'll again look at the amended budget options based on what the board decides for construction. So really CPPRT is the huge change from last month. Everything else, status quo. Questions?
Anyone have any questions for Jeff? I had one. I'm just, what you were saying about the CCPRT, you said that there's been some significant rises in the last couple of years. Do you see that trending? Is it just going to keep getting better and better, or is it going to plateau at some point?
I, I believe it has to plateau at some point. I don't expect that trend to continue. We didn't expect to get 1.1 million last year in a year with COVID. It was 800 to 900,000, but things have really changed the last couple of years with regards to both assessment of property and property tax with the new assessor. So, you know, again, I don't believe those numbers are going to change substantially. I, I still have a hard time believing that we're going to see an even bigger jump from that number. So, you know, looking at budgeting for next year, because we didn't get the numbers, the CPPRT numbers we got last week, we just got, we just got the projections last week. I'm probably-
Is that normal?
What's that?
Is that normal to be about that time?
Yeah, it's end of August, middle of September, somewhere around that time. And that's usually, but we don't see that big a jump. That's the thing is I'll, I'll budget 800,000, they'll come back at 850. So it's not that huge a difference. But I have a hard time believing that we're going to see anything higher than that.
And it's based on sales tax, you said?
It's based on 2.5% of sales of the corporations. Yeah.
It's good news, but-
I mean, it means, it means the economy had a good end of the year.
Good. Does anybody else have any other questions? On the board? Did the finance committee have anything that they wanted to add from our conversations or?
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, no, I don't think so. I think you covered it just as well here as you did for us. So thank you.
And I certainly hope in the board packet, the, the summary that I put in there with the narrative explaining the, the process helps as well, especially for those of you going through it for the first time. If you have any questions, obviously, reach out to me anytime. Thank you.
And just to clarify, this is a public hearing, so if there were any members of the audience that wanted to address Mr. Fair regarding the FY22 budget, then they're free to. I think you're good. I think your explanation has, has put us all at ease. Thank you very much for doing all that work and all that research. If the discussion is complete, I'd like a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Our second, oh, okay. And the minutes will reflect that the hearing was adjourned at 7:12 PM. Could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Linoy?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
Okay, we have closed the public hearing and we are now able to move on with the rest of our agenda. So our first item next is to approve the regular and special and closed meeting minutes of August 18th. Sorry, it is just regular and closed. I have the word special in here, but that's not correct. Regular and closed meeting of August 18th, 2021. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any quick changes or corrections to the minutes or any comments? Nope. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Our next item is to approve the payment of bills in the amount of 200, no, I'm sorry. Even with glasses, I can't see. 329,017 dollars and 10 cents. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the bills? Good. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yeah, Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
Ms. Linoy?
Yes.
Mr. Guliana?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes. The bills will be paid. Thank you. Next item is the PTA report. Do we have any representative from the PTA? Oh, great. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Kehl Shaw, one of the co-presidents for the PTA. We started off this year with the first general meeting on September 8th, where we got to meet Jordan Kilpatrick, which was really nice. It was an in-person meeting, and the remaining meetings for the year will be on Zoom. The first event, which we had, was Connect for Respect 5K run or walk, which was very successful, and we had 35 raffles, and the kids and parents and the Fairview faculty was very happy about it. And we would like to thank Mrs. Larkin, Mr. Lebedka, Mrs. Whitaker, the nurse and Cassius team for helping us through the event. The first PTA newsletter went out this week, and we continue to do that every week, and we updated our Fairview PTA website. And we also posted our first 5K video with all the pictures, so peoples can have a look at it and attend the next future events. Tonight is our PTA benefit night at Colverse. And the next upcoming event is the PTA Halloween party, which will be hosted on October 30th, which will be a trunk or treat with the different time slots and contests for pumpkin carving, pumpkin crafts. And the fundraisers, which are coming up is October 19, the PTA benefit night, Lumen Larry's. October 29th, we'll be doing the classroom parties. November 4th will be the PTA benefit night at Willigan downtown Skokie from 11 AM to 10 PM. And November 10th will be the next PTA general meeting at 6:30 PM on Zoom. Thank you. Any questions?
Just sounds like you're back in the swing and busy as ever.
Yeah, we are very excited to be the co-presidents and looking forward to new and innovative stuff.
Thank you.
I would just say thank you for the 5K. It was a great community event. It was so special that you remembered September 11th and took the opportunity to remember that with everybody who was present. That was appreciated by me and I think many others. And I also want to thank you for being so willing and flexible to adjust the events considering the situation we're in. We are really excited about the trunk or treat, which if you're not familiar with the trunk or treat, it will be in our parking lot and people will have their trunks or back of their car open so that kids can pick up, you know, pencils or candy or whatever it might be in a safe way, since trick or treating might not be what it normally is. So we just appreciate your creativity and willing to really work with us. We're trying to keep the school open for as long as possible and as safely as possible. And so with your help, you know, that's definitely a goal we'll be able to obtain. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, well done, PTA. So we're on a roll of good news now. So school activity report. Is there any members of the board or administration wish to share good news from the district? Great, thank you. He, he's a great guy, Mr. Bob McCollum. He really is a great guy. I have some good news. And it's actually an honor for the entire board. You didn't even know that we had. Our school board has been recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards as a, we've been given the school board governance recognition honor. So this is something that we have applied to in the past. Dr. Whitaker and myself put forward the application this summer. And we were required to speak of, of the wonderful things that our board is doing. So we talked about the fact that we had the board training with ISB this spring, that we have a strategic plan that we're monitoring, which is obviously monitoring the progress of that and progress of improving our school. We have a consistent superintendent review process. We have an orientation of new board members that we obviously implemented in particular this year. We have our code of conduct, we do our policy reviews. We're doing our best to connect with the community and extending that connection. So all of those things combined means that our board has been recognized with this award. The bad news is we're supposed to be collecting it this evening at the ISB fall meeting, but we're here instead. But that's, that's a shame, but we would have been going to the awards evening this evening and being presented with it. So but never mind, we will be sending them a photograph of us and we will actually get a physical award sometime soon. So well done, everybody. We're doing a good job. That's great news. Completely unexpected. Thank you. Anyone else while we're on the roll?
I got some stuff. I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Lapaca, who has accommodated a bunch of middle schoolers. Like a sixth grader who was remote all year was entering middle school and he let them sort of walk their schedule before school started. And I know it was a fifth grade thing, but like to open the door for sixth graders who hadn't been here, I think made that transition so much easier for them. The word on the street, you know, I ask kids a lot of stuff when they're walking home and I try to get a beat on things. Advisory sounds like cool things are happening. The biggest plus seems to be that they don't have to go to gym right away. That's the big message, but that they're enjoying having that time to sort of connect and get to know different adults. And there was something else on our list. I was looking at the 5K was amazing. You always have the most beautiful weather and great music.
That's good.
And I thought of something else, and now I can't remember it. Sorry. Oh, the virtual curriculum night. So I'm bummed that we didn't get to like all convene, but I'm so grateful we didn't all convene, right? It's that mixed bag feeling. But the presentations that I experienced were unbelievable. Knowing the time and hours it takes to make it feel like the teacher sitting there talking to me was so impressive. Not only was it fun to watch, my kid knew what they were talking about, which was great. And the email, like I emailed the teachers and was like, this was great. Here's a couple of questions. 24 hours later, here's my answer. That I just need the staff to know that that is super acknowledged, super grateful as parents. I wish we could come together, but I was also grateful to be able to like watch and cook dinner at the same time. So there was this weird, you know, flexibility. So I just wanted to acknowledge the teachers they, and, and I went to teachers that my kid doesn't even have. I was like, oh, what did so-and-so do? Oh, whose bitmoji is this? Like, it was super fun to experience that. And my kid really like was a little bit engaged, which is big for a sixth grader.
Thanks for bringing that up. I also had a good look through, and I obviously don't have the connection of having a student here, but, but I clicked through all of them. I was reading everything. I was looking at, and the, the bitmodus, yeah, you're right. I mean, they were spot on, some of them. They were really, it was like, I didn't need the name. I knew who it was. So, thanks. Good. Excellent. So if there's nothing else to add, we'll move on to administrative reports. And the first one on my list here is the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully, board members had an opportunity to read through the report in the packet. As usual, I will hit the highlights, but one of the very first highlights is I have the pleasure of introducing all of you to Ms. Jordan Kilpatrick, our new Director of Community and Student Engagement. And I asked Jordan if she wouldn't mind putting together just a little presentation for all of you so you could get a sense of what she's been doing in the first, with, let's see, is this four weeks, Jordan? Four weeks? So it's gone by fast, but Jordan, why don't you come up to the mic and have an opportunity to fill the board in on what you've been up to?
Sure. So greetings and good evening to the board and to everyone else that is present. For the last couple of weeks, I've spent my efforts towards really just engaging with our faculty and staff here, getting to know students, meeting with our grade level teams and sitting with them and just allowing them to ask questions and kind of going over what this role really looks like, how I can be of benefit to them and the students and families that we serve. I've also spent a lot of time just out in the community, building rapport with community leaders and partners, trying to kind of connect those dots and build partnerships there. And also just taking time to really learn about all this Skokie has to offer. I will personally say that I think this community is amazing and there, that there is so much out there to offer to our families and students here at Fairview. And so it's my pleasure to act as the liaison between our district, our families and students that we service and our community. Going forward, I will be working diligently on continuing building those partnerships and just building that rapport. I've met with the Skokie Library and had a very detailed tour. It's beautiful and top-notch. And I've been very impressed just with that experience, being able to come back and bring that knowledge and information back to the school and kind of disseminate that and take the opportunity to encourage our families and students to go and take part in what the library has to offer. I've reached out to the Vietnamese Association of Illinois and created partnerships and engaged with them as well. Also, sat and had some conversation with some folks over at District 68. So I'm really just kind of spreading my roots and learning what's out there, building those partnerships and making sure that we stay connected. Moving forward, I will continue that effort. We've got some new things coming down the pipeline. Hopefully in October, we will be launching a new Fairview Family Engagement Group. So be on the lookout for material about that. That's to come soon. I've been working with the PTA and the DEI PTA Committee and trying to figure out where we can collectively collaborate to build initiatives there as well. So thank you for being very warm welcoming. I am excited to be here and I look forward to all that is to come. Any questions?
No, we're just very happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jordan. That was excellent. So that was probably the highlight. No. Thank you so much for doing that. Just a couple of things from the superintendent's report. We held a Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Committee meeting this month, which you'll hear about more later in the meeting. We also held an Education Committee meeting. And that team will provide a summary of those meetings. Wanted to provide an update on the equity audit. We are still in the draft phase of the audit, but I'm happy to report we are on target to receive the audit in November, as we have been told all along. In November, Dr. Dubiel has, is planning to attend this meeting. And we'll be presenting that report and copies of the full report will be provided at that time. So, you know, we're very pleased that everything has stayed on track in terms of the audit. We have been working to get the shield testing up and running. We were hopeful that we'd be able to begin testing students on next Tuesday. We did have a walkthrough of the process today. And I'm not 100% confident it's going to start next Tuesday. There are issues with just rostering and for them to obtain staff to do the testing. Staffing issues continue to pop up all over the place for, for everyone. So, you know, So, you know, I would assume it could be pushed back one week. I would expect it wouldn't be any longer than that. But, you know, we are, you know. Continuing to work through that process. Part of the issue is that once the state of Illinois announced that it would be free for all public school districts. Every public school district seemed to want to get on board right at the same time. So they've been sort of deluged with a lot of interest. And they're trying to get a lot of things up and running in a lot of schools across the state. So. You know, but we're definitely on the right path and on track as far as that goes. I have met with Hello Torah, our neighbors next door to inform them about the possibility of construction and our building projects. We've had surveyors out and whatnot and, you know, we are very collegial with them. They too are looking to do some building in the near future. So, you know, we like to work together and and support one another if we need to use a parking lot or. A field from time to time, we kind of do those types of things for each other. I have also met with the Skokie Police Department and the village because there is. Some talk about the crossing guard program changing in all of Skokie. They too are struggling with staffing crossing guards. But they are also struggling financially and would prefer to. Not continue to support that program financially. So the superintendents are. In discussion with the village about that because we believe crossing guards are community safety issue and. You know, we'll try to work that out. Fairview only has one crossing guard, so it's not a real significant budget impact for us if we were to have to pick up that role in our district. But some of the schools have five, six, 10 different crossings where they have guards. So. It's a little bit of a larger issue elsewhere in Skokie. So I'm not overly concerned about that. Just carrying on to curriculum instruction, we have, you know, staff and new rules. We have new instructional coaches. We have interventionists. So we're working with those folks to bring them on board quickly. We have finished our State Board of Education town's consolidated district plan, which is usually a fairly heavy lift. But that has been approved, which opens the door for us to be able to apply for all of our title grant funding. So that's the next step. And. Know a variety of, you know, other things are going on in the district. But we'll be talking about those as we get into the strategic planning report and whatnot. So. If I can answer any questions from my report, I'm happy to do so. I have a question. Sure. I have a crossing crowd question. I know it's, it seems like it's been a little sporadic from what I can hear. But I also am wondering if we're revamping or if we're looking at hiring or something. I've become aware that kids are crossing. At Estes rather than Fairview. And I think this is kind of always a thing. I don't know if there's. Teachers or staff. I mean, I realize they're doing it of their own free will. And it's a huge problem and you are, I'm sure constantly telling them to go down to Fairview. But I just wanted you guys to be aware that I think there are kids crossing.
Yeah, we see parents and kids crossing there and we encourage them to use the crosswalk. You know, it's something that I've spoken to the village about as well as maybe the potential of adding a crosswalk, just so it's more visual. So we can continue that conversation. It would be helpful to Hello Torah as well because they have people. Parking in the neighborhood and crossing there as well. So we can continue that conversation. You know, I. We have a great relationship with the police department and so this crossing guard thing. You know, they're having trouble staffing it and they can't just always send a police officer because they have other things going on in the village and they have to be doing their responsibilities. So in that event, we will always cover it ourselves. You know, Colleen's been crossing, Mike's been crossing kids, I'll cross kids, you know, as long as we know that there's not someone there. So. If you roll up to pick up your children and you don't see, you know, we're trying to stay on top of it too. You know, we'll go out and we'll. Put on the vest and get the sign and we'll cross the kids. So. You know, we're working through it, but I think it's just a larger. It's just a larger issue with employment.
Can we as parents or community?
I wouldn't encourage that. I think it's a liability.
Okay.
To have volunteers do it. You really should be trained and you should be wearing. Yeah. So probably we shouldn't be out in the crosswalk. It's probably not the best idea, but it's better us than no one. And it's only happened a couple of times, so it'll get itself straightened out.
Any other questions about the report? Okay, so moving on, the next item I have on my list is the 2021 Strategic Plan Update.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to turn my back, but we're gonna have the presentation is up on the board. And I don't have it memorized, so. So we are in year three of the district's strategic plan. While we might have hoped to have, you know, further progress in the plan, a lot of our activities were put on hold. Due to the pandemic and needing to kind of re-shift our focus towards. Remote learning at one point, but then, you know, bringing students back in person and doing some split teaching and whatnot. But on this very first slide, I just wanted to remind everyone of our mission statement. And our vision statement. These were developed by the Strategic Planning Committee, which came together on one long Saturday. I think many of you were involved. We invited community members, we invited students and alumni. And we had about 60 members of the community, the teaching staff. And we all came together on that Saturday and developed both the mission and vision together. So we're really proud of that work because it came, you know, from the fruits of the labor of so many people. On that day that dedicated their time to the district. So just a reminder, I think it's important that we remember our mission and vision. We reflect on it often. That group two came together and developed these belief statements. Which really are at the core of the decision-making, both by our administrative team and our teaching staff each and every day. As we work through programs and initiatives for our students. The strategic plan. Ended up having six major goals. The first being community connections and relations. The second having to do with curriculum and instruction. The third diversity and inclusivity. The fourth fiscal stewardship. Goal five, social emotional learning and finally goal six, student support services. In the board packet, I provided you the full strategic plan with all of the progress and all of the initiatives that have worked up, been worked on to date. I'm not going to go through it in that level of detail tonight. But what I do want to go through and our team is going to join in to kind of walk you through. Those items that are in progress for this year and the things that are going to be addressed this year through the strategic plan. So when you see one B, that is tying this particular. Responsibility or task tying it right back to the strategic plan, goal number one, component B. So you can kind of cross check it to the strategic plan if you want more information. So I'm going to ask my team to kind of pop up. And the first one up is. Technology Director Healy is going to talk about the revamp of the district website.
Good evening, board. So currently we are in the process of revamping our district website. We're in the phase where we are looking at mock designs. We believe that we have trimmed it down. During this process, we did go through many different district websites, looked at what they had to sort of piecemeal what we wanted. To sort of have a very nice customized. Website for us. Part of that was that we wanted to upgrade our communication tools that we send out to the community. So you may have noticed this year. The newsletters or the district emails look a little bit different, a little bit, hopefully a little bit cleaner, easier to read on a mobile device or on a computer. So it's device agnostic, which is great. But what's nice is that once we start combining the two, once our website is launched. Our communications, our posts, everything will be integrated into the website as well. So things will cross communicate. Which is a wonderful thing for us. One part of the communications tool that we are still launching is the translation tool. So if you noticed this year during your registration process, you were asked about your primary language code or a primary language that you would like communication in. Most of our families did select English. There is a handful that selected other languages. And what's going to be able to be nice is that when we create a newsletter or anything that we send out via this tool. It can be translated for them and they will receive it in that language. So another way to increase our communication and our. Networking with our families. And then another great part of this is that you also received this year a secure document. Delivery. So we're actually going to be able to start sending things home to you guys via email. Whether that's report cards, map scores, you know, all these different type of sensitive data pieces. But they're password protected. So when you had to type in your student's birthday. It unlocks the document. So this is another great communication tool that we're going to be able to expand on in the future.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk about the parent mentor program. So this is a program that's been going on for a long time in Skokie. It's run through the EL Parent Center in Skokie. And what this program does is it is open to families and adults. Who are wanting to know what it's like to be in an American school. They're not familiar with what it's like to be here in a school in Skokie. It helps. There's a pretty intensive training that the EL Parent Center puts on for them. And then we reach out to staff here. Typically over the past couple of years, it's been kindergarten through fourth grade, but this year we're opening up to middle school teachers as well. And we ask teachers to host a parent mentor. This is an opportunity for the parents through the EL Parent Center to come into our building. Work two to three days a week for about two hours each day directly with a small group of students or one-on-one with students. It's an opportunity for them to work on their English language, an opportunity for them to see what it's like and what their children are experiencing here in Skokie. It's been really successful program. We've actually hired many parent mentors that have come through this program here as instructional assistants and. It's just a great opportunity for them to feel more comfortable with where their children are going to school. They like work on their language and in a way, in a way for them to make a connection with their child's teacher. So we're continuing that this year. Last year it was put on hold due to COVID and we did it the year prior. This year we are going to be hosting four parent mentors. We'll have three in primary and one in middle school.
Great, thank you. The next item, one D, you know, we are so thrilled to have the new role this year, thanks to the board, the Director of Community and Student Engagement, and we really believe that's gonna. In that role and when with Jordan in that position, that that's going to really help further our work to engage the community and. Just keep us moving forward in a really focused way. So. Moving on, and since Jordan spoke already, I won't belabor that point, but. It is, you know, an important piece of this puzzle moving forward. And I think Mike is up next.
Yeah, sure. The next on the list actually started pre-pandemic when we had a group of teachers in a committee looking at. Homework policies across kindergarten through eighth grade. So what that group did in the summer pre-COVID. We started just to look at where our staff was in regards to homework philosophies of homework, looked at a lot of articles and research. We were starting to get to a point where we were. Examining different recommendations when it comes to the amount of minutes per night, per week. And just doing some really great work and it was supposed to carry on during that school year. So that did stop. You know, in that, in the spring. So we're going to revisit that conversation and hopefully have. At least guidelines or recommendations that stay consistent with some common language on what parents and students can expect. Kind of by grade level in regards to homework. So that will be some work that we're doing. We also. It started having conversations at the staff level at two D in regards to our social sciences district learning team. So our social sciences DLT. Which we're really excited about. So some of the things that that group will be doing and will be, you know, looking to. Connect with some of our other stakeholders in the community is to examine standards, to take a look at vertical alignment across all grade levels. And start really digging into what social sciences are being taught and then in the future, in the spring, probably start looking at. Different types of programs, things that would be really great for our students across all grade levels. So that is the update in the social sciences DLT.
Thank you. Next was in terms of staff development, supporting student populations and over the past couple of years, we have. Taken an approach to staff development in sort of a more thematic way. Last year, we really dove deeply into gender through Laurie's Children's Hospital and a presentation, couple of presentations. About students and children who are struggling with gender identity issues. And so we wanted to provide a base of knowledge for all of our staff. So everybody attended those sessions. And then the second session was really more of an opportunity for staff members to break out into smaller groups and have deeper conversations about. Potentially students that are actually in their classes at their grade level to dig even deeper on those topics. And this year. We have brought an ability awareness program. Which was presented by NTDSC, our partner in special education and again, all of our staff attended that. It was geared towards K through four and fifth through eighth. So a little bit of a different. Little bit of a different twist based upon the grade levels taught. But that will really continue to be some of our thematic staff development planning in this school year. So that's three C and Mr. Fair is going to jump in on. The fours.
Sure. The, obviously by now everyone's well aware of the facility planning going on, which will take up a ton of our time in the next year. And that's not just the potential construction projects coming down the pipeline, but the yearly maintenance. And the long range facility plan, which will incorporate the next five to 10 years. And that will be a fluid document that we revisit with the board yearly. The board approved fund balance policy. Of course, we discussed that during the budget presentation and that we, the first time we've had a fund balance policy. And we're going to be using that funds, fund balance policy in conjunction with the financing for the construction to try and. Meet a good medium between what we're going to finance and what we're going to actually use district funds for. Enhancing the wellness program through near yearly offering. So this has been a lot of fun. Over the last six or seven years and that the insurance committee, it was originally formed three contract negotiations ago around just insurance. Has evolved into a more of a wellness committee. We presented the board a couple of times. And every year we try and develop new things that we can do for teachers and staff to promote wellness in the building for long range benefits when it relates to insurance. It's nice to go to our cooperative meetings of 120 school districts. And see us talked about in the top fifth of those districts as far as participation from staff. As well as continually having great examples of things that we do in the building. And programs that we put on that other districts then can then copy because they're having troubles of their own and developing a wellness program. You know, last year we incorporated the, we started, we'll start this out this year again as the random max of coffee with our staff. We're going to have workout classes and yoga classes and essentially we fund all that through the premium payback, which we get for participating in wellness. So it's a cost neutral thing to the district. The fourth item there and four D is the ISB Threat Assessment Team. So this kind of got sidetracked as we were going through COVID. We started the discussion. We have a group together. We've been to a couple of professional developments on this topic and ISB policies that we need to have a team in place. And also a plan in place and we plan on presenting that to the board in January or February, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong. But that's the plan right now to present it to the board in some form or fashion in January, February.
All right. And then five B that's on here is implement advisory and thank you to Ms. Downing for a shout out to advisory. I really appreciate it. And just to circle back to our advisory program and it started again when the strategic plan took place, it was on our plan to implement an advisory at Fairview. And what we did is really took a look at different advisory programs that are around the township, the neighboring middle school. Programs have a full advisory at different, at different schools and then kind of looked at ways that we can implement at a fair view to make it work for what. Our students experience in middle school day to day. Everything in advisory is rooted in our second step program, which we adopted through the strategic plan as well. So our teachers are using the second step program in advisory, but also it's an opportunity for students to. Get academic supports to be able to have conversations after the weekend or during the week, just highs, lows and. Ha ha's is one of the things a lot of our teachers do is just speak to what's a high of a week, what's a low of the week and what's something funny that happened. So our. Staff is doing an amazing job. It's new to a lot of them. So I have to applaud all of them for taking the time and effort to really. You know, make it their own and give kids different experiences. And I just think every year it will continue to get better and better. It's Tuesday through Friday for middle school students for 27 minutes and we felt like 25 minutes. Once the kids get settled and they're in their seats. Is a really good time to be able to see a lesson through or at least a portion of a lesson through to be able to have meaningful conversations. And then, and then carry on the next day. So many different places, you know, do do less time. We felt it was really important to give students that. That chunk of time a consistent basis, Tuesday through Friday, every week. So. That's up and running and we'll continue to give some feedbacks. And if you ever have any questions, I think I'd be the guy to ask. So thank you.
Yeah. And finally, six A review math and reading intervention programs. This is something as a team, we're really passionate about and.
This is something as a team, we're really passionate about and our teachers have done a really a lot of work with this this summer. So with the support of the board, as you know, we were able to add an additional math reading interventionist, an additional reading interventionist and an instructional coach. This has grown our team significantly. It's more than doubled what we had pre-COVID. And so this summer, in connection with the strategic plan, a couple of our faculty members, Rachel Ronan, who's our middle school reading interventionist. We have Shannon McCrone, Alyssa Goodnight, and Martha Gale, our school psychologist, came together to research reading intervention programs. And their goal this summer was not to add a huge program more onto our teachers' plates or to replace our core reading instruction, which is journeys. Many of you may know, as your students travel through our programs, their goal was to find something that was going to complement our tier one instruction, which is what the majority of our students here at Fairview receive in the general education classroom. On top of that, they were also looking to find a program that would also work during their intervention time at the primary level during the wind block time, which is what I need. So the program that they proposed to our admin team is called Really Great Reading. And what's fabulous about this program is it's going to work in the general ed core instruction during the reading block. Then it also has programs within Really Great Reading that have a tier two, which is a more intense program, and a tier three, which is another intense program. We feel like in each of these areas, our intervention team and our team of homeroom teachers will be able to meet our kids' needs in a much different way than they've been able to in the past. After looking at our data through MAP and our FastBridge, many of our fall assessments, we found that our K2 students are the ones that have really taken the greatest hit due to COVID. And so this program targets our kindergarten through second grade students. And with the support of Rebecca Hoffman and our reading interventionist, Rebecca is our new instructional coach. We're really looking forward to getting that program up and, up and running as we speak. They're working on it right now. So we're, we're really excited about it and we really appreciate your support as a board to be able to make that happen.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions about any of those projects that are sort of in progress? And then our final slide is a host of other things that we're also working on that, you know, aren't directly connected to the strategic plan. But, you know, the strategic plan is a great guideline for us. But there are things that happen over the course of many years that we are forced to, you know, really have to take, take a second look and take a pause and sometimes reprioritize. And so I know this isn't new to any of you, but the COVID mitigations and the contact tracing has just been a very significant part of what we've been doing. Getting the shield testing up and running and off the ground this beginning of the school year as well. The equity audit, although it wasn't included in the strategic plan, it's a very important part of what we've been doing going forward. And it will continue to be. I think it's important that the board understand that for the first time this year, the kindergarten team is implementing the kids' assessment, which is a in-depth look at our kindergarten students at various times throughout the school year to understand how they're coming to us and how they're leaving kindergarten year in terms of their social emotional wellbeing, but also their school skills and their academic skills. The architectural RFP and selection process was not something we had necessarily planned on, but it was necessary. It was another project that, you know, we feel was, you know, really needed. And, you know, the successful completion of that process has then led us to the development of the long-range facility plan, which again, was not a part of the original strategic planned. The ESSER funds, we never thought that we would be planning for having sort of that influx of dollars to be able to do some of the things that we feel are necessary, whether it be COVID mitigations or adding staff to support students with any learning gaps that they may have. We have focused on professional development, specifically in the area of mathematics. Because prior to, that's okay. Whoops, Ted Lasso, love him, love that show. The mathematics, you know, at prior to COVID, we were looking at our math test scores and really seeing, you know, a slight decrease of scores over a course of many years. And so we wanted to address that. And so that has continued. Our technology infrastructure, again, you know, due to the influx of funding, we've been able to forward some projects to update our infrastructure and really to protect us in the event that we have to do some continued remote platforms, you know, going forward, not knowing, you know, where the pandemic will take us. We deployed iPads to kindergarten and first graders because we found out that the Chromebooks were not a great tool for kindergarten and first grade students. It didn't work well for them. And we didn't really understand that until we were in that remote environment where they were really relying on, on their technology devices every single day. So we were able to do that project. We've added new positions. And finally, addressing our bus driver shortage. It's a national problem. We are so thrilled that we've been able to recruit and retain an excellent crew of bus drivers. But it's one of those things that, again, it's not really accounted for through a strategic planning process, but it's critical. That's how our students, many of them, get to school each and every day and get home every day. And it allows parents to be able to do what they need to do each day. So we're very grateful for the work that was been done through Mr. Fair and his work with the Transportation Department in keeping our drivers onboard with us and finding those new drivers to bring, bring to us. So that's a overview. I know that it's a lot. We love having the strategic plan because it helps us maintain focus. Because it's very easy to go off in a lot of different directions, as you can see, the other major projects. But that's the beauty of the board being flexible with us because you allow us to take extra time if we needed on certain projects. You understand that things come onto our plate that we weren't expecting that may take us off point on some of the strategic initiatives. So, you know, we're continuing to try to, you know, really work through the plan aggressively. But we're also trying to be very sensitive to the fact that our staff have worked really hard. And in a small building, everyone has to do a lot of things. And so when we have committees running, there's probably, every member of the staff is probably involved in something. So we just need to be cognizant of helping them balance their responsibilities to their own families and friends, but also their professional responsibilities here to their students, along with all of these other things that we're trying to get done. So I'm happy and I think any member of the team is happy to take any questions that the board might have. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to you, Cindy, your, your staff, and actually all the teachers for putting in the amount of work that goes into every bullet on that slide. It's easy to put a bullet down, just a few words, but the amount of effort behind every bullet is tremendous. And given all that you've had to deal with with COVID and teaching remotely and still trying to engage with your students, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I would echo exactly what Shereen said. That list you showed at the end, which is basically the over and above everything on the strategic plan, which is obviously entirely necessary. Much of it has come out of COVID and so on. It's almost like an extra plan in itself. I mean, it's a huge long list. So to be tackling all of that. I, I love that the, the entire team of administration and staff have come together so well on this and that you're, you're getting the job done, which is great. I, I think it's just fabulous. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next.
Onto the next one, which is a facility planning and financial, financing's next steps.
Okay, so, um, I will tackle the facility planning report. There are a couple of updates for the board. We, since the last board meeting, our architects have been working with different, different engineers to really take a deeper look at our site and what we're proposing and meeting with the village. And we have, we have now learned that there are some fairly significant water retention issues that we are facing. For those of you who are really familiar with our property, we have the, the soccer field, which we call the South Field. And then there's the North Field, which really isn't a field. It's really intended to be a water retention area. But we use it as a field because a lot of times it's dry enough for kids to play on and it gives us extra space. That water retention is not sufficient to continue to support any addition to this facility. And so what that will require is a fairly significant look at underground water retention opportunities, whether it be under the current soccer field, under, again, that current retention area as it is now, or looking at the parking lot and how we might store water. We are also understanding that the way in which water exits this property out into the village sewer system is that it almost all entirely moves from that South Field to the south perimeter of the site and then out east to Laramie, where it finds the larger sewer system. What happens is that because of the way that was designed, it is not a very effective way to move water. And the water backs up and backs up and backs up to the point where that South Field becomes flooded, which it was designed for. But we have experienced water issues in our courtyards here in between the building. We've also experienced some significant water issues at the base of the bus driveway. It floods. And part of going forward is that we will be required to correct those water issues. There, there's many ways to solve these problems, but what it requires is that anything that we add to the building, whether it be classrooms on the south side, whether it be a learning center, none of that can be done until we address the water issues. And that will require us to first redevelop the current parking lot and the North Field. And so in the drawings, you all saw how they're kind of suggesting we reangle the parking lot and there's a different traffic flow. That will allow the water to be piped down this driveway. So we have sort of two ways of water leaving the property, et cetera. So the whole point of the matter is that the first project that we have to address is the parking lot and the water retention. If the board were to move forward with any of the projects, we have to do that first. And so that potentially sets back any timeframe for being able to do construction. If the board were to approve the South kindergarten preschool construction of classrooms or the library or both, this coming summer, we would propose that in June, once the teachers and the students are out, the parking lot gets pulled up, the water retention is done between June and August. Parking lot is finished, fields are finished, so that when the children return and the staff return, we have a place for children to play, we have a place for teachers to park. And then the next step would be to break ground on whatever construction the district wants to do. The district could break ground in September, even though students are here, because those construction projects are really apart from the school. So the South Wing project could be worked on while students are in session. It will require some detouring of students leaving the building to the playground. It will require, you know, some safeguards to be put into place. So that's, you know, construction fences, et cetera. But it's certainly something that's possible. If we were to go that route, construction would take place during the school year through the summer of 23 with an opening in the fall of 23. At one point, I was hopeful we might be opening something in the fall of 22. We are desperately needing classroom space. And so I feel an urgency to get some classrooms built, but that's not going to happen. And so that's the major update for the board today is that there, there's really no possibility of starting the construction of building prior to that water retention work being done. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Certainly no expert in any of this, but I hope I've explained it in a manner that makes sense. Questions?
Well, I was just going to say anybody that lives as we do down this end of Skokie knows everything about water retention and sewer backup and flooded yards and stuff like that. It's, in a way, it's really not a surprise. I don't know if it's apocryphal, but isn't Skokie means swamp or something in Algonquin?
Well, actually, Mrs. Lorcan was at the Skokie Heritage Museum today and learned the definition of Skokie.
Skokie means swamp? Yeah, that's where we live. Yeah.
Actually, I escorted third graders on their field trip to the Skokie Heritage Museum. And I just learned that Skokie means swamp.
Yes, it does. I wasn't sure if it was apocryphal, but I've heard it many, many times over the years I've lived here. And it's like my basement has proved it. And I bet most of us around the table have had that same experience of sometime or other. So it's unfortunate, but it has to be done. It has to be done properly. That's my view.
Right.
My only thoughts, questions are, is there any interest or in terms of crisis for space in classrooms, there any thought about like mobile units?
No, I don't care for mobile units because they present their own issues. I'm not saying I would rule that out at this moment, but our architects have promised to work with us to relook at all of our spaces. If we need those classrooms, we will hopefully be able to be creative and come up with some solutions. You know, at this moment, we don't need the class, a classroom. But we continue to have new students, you know, the population kinds of, kind of ebbs and flows a little bit. So it's very hard to predict that. But it makes me uncomfortable to know that we don't have any spaces if needed. And then we're using a lot of spaces in unconventional ways. You know, the board meeting room is being shared with Ms. Kilpatrick. You know, I mean, there are spaces, teachers, you know, got doubled up into office spaces. You know, that's not how we prefer things to be, but you know, that's, the adults will do what we have to do to make sure the children have the spaces.
And yeah, I get that. Just a word of advice or whatever. Having worked in buildings, having taught in buildings where there's construction happening, noise is a definite issue. The, I would just encourage your staff to get, to have a way to communicate with workmen. Like I was able to ask workmen on specific days, like can you drill afternoon? And they were like, no, we can't. We have to drill this morning. Okay. But if there's a way to make the noisier part of the day later in the day, they would do it. But it did not often work.
Right.
And I know it's just something we're going to have to deal with.
Yeah. When this district went through the major project in 99, 2000, we found that as well, you know, they, a lot of the staff would, would start really early. So they could get a couple of hours in prior to students even arriving. But then there were some things that we could do into the evening. And there's some things we just can't do when students are here, period. So luckily, we're small. So, and we're all on one site. And, you know, I think that, you know, just like the project and, you know, previously in 99, 2000, I mean, that we, we were expected to be watching and observing the construction and monitoring what was going on and making sure things were safe. And it was pretty much a full-time responsibility.
Yeah, I totally trust it'll be handled, but.
Yeah, no, it's not ideal. But not, you know, in order to do, if, if the board chooses to do the full gamut of project, there's going to be some of that.
I want to highlight something just came to mind. It's probably a little preliminary, but I just want to, we are talking about starting construction if it's something on the south end and during the school year. And it's something to keep in mind. If, how with COVID and how it's changed, you know, just entrances in the school and outdoor space for the students with the pandemic, something to keep in mind.
Right.
When we get there.
Yeah, absolutely. We think that the parking lot and the field upgrades may lead to more spaces. At least, you know, in the beginning and about potentially a different traffic flow pattern. I'm not going to say a better, but a different traffic flow pattern that will have more queuing. But, you know, that will be, those details will be things that, you know, my team has to work and communicate well to the community, you know, if, if that time comes. So. Any other board questions? We talked about this at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. I don't know if there's anything else from that meeting that I'm leaving out. I think, I think that was the, pretty much the gist of it. You know, we're, we're trying to work on parallel tracks so that we have the designs and the plans in place and the communication with the village because there's a process there that takes many months for permits. And at the same time, you know, looking at financing options and moving that along. And at the same time, you know, looking at financing options and moving that along, all at the same time, you know, the board hasn't technically approved any project. So we're trying to do a lot of legwork to be in a good position to be able to, to run with a project if it's approved. But there's also some gray areas in all of this because we don't know, you know, really how the board is going to fall on, on, you know, the approval of this project. So the next piece of this that we wanted to talk about a bit tonight is, you know, some of the financing options. And you had in your packets a presentation about financing options. And Mr. Fair has bravely offered to walk us through the presentation. We had planned on having Elizabeth Hennessy here this evening, but she is running late and I hate to ask the board to, to wait. So Jeff is going to walk us through the presentation and we'll try to answer as any questions that you might have.
As best I can. I feel like when employees ask me about tax information, I have to have the disclaimer, I'm not a tax professional and I can't have any recommendations here. But yeah, Liz Hennessy, who is very familiar with our district, used to work for William H., William Blair, and now works for Raymond James. She's worked on financing with the district before and we've engaged with her to talk about it again. She's very familiar with not only Skokie, but she's one of the preeminent voices in public financing as a whole. She put together a presentation for your board packet. And, you know, we've gone through different options right now. I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, we'd be able to fund this totally out of pocket. When we're looking at a $21 million, $22 million construction project with a total budget every year of about 13 to 14 million, and we have to look at cash flow, we have to look at current market conditions. And right now, the market is in such a condition where the interest rates are still very low. And there's a ton of school districts going out to borrow. Couple that with a large amount of federal funding. As I mentioned, we have funds on hand, both from retired debt and from working cash that we'd be able to use for whatever projects. So we're trying to use that in conjunction with our fund balance policy to create the perfect kind of borrowing scenario. I, I know I continue to harp on the fact our tax rate is very low. I mean, taxes are never going to be as low as people want them to be. It's just a fact of the matter. I mean, it's, but our taxes right now, because the EAV in our district has gone up so much in the last few years, borrowing right now, our tax rate would be, borrowing for this project, if it is, I think in the packet, the proposal in the packet was about 13 to 14 million. Borrowing at that level right now, extended over a period of time, would keep our tax rate at the second lowest in Niles Township. It's the second lowest right now. It would stay at the second lowest in Niles Township, even with that borrowing level. Obviously, there's a number of other factors that would have to remain, like our EAV would have to remain the same and a number of other things we have to do as far as balancing goes. The next steps in this process would be for Elizabeth to come out and give a presentation as like a town hall, as we've done with the architects, to the community coming up in the next three or four weeks prior to our next board meeting. And we'll send notice out about that. And what she'll do is she'll walk you through in great detail what is involved in the, what was in the packet there. As I said, there's nothing that's been finalized there. We've talked at a finance committee level, basically on, on what's in the packet. We've talked about maneuvering with the different numbers and looking at our cash flow, looking at our projections and trying to see where the sweet spot is. The tough thing is right now, and I brought this up during the budget, is that the, the trends are a little off because of everything that's transpired. The, we used to go, predicated, the budgeting process and the projection process is predicated on trends. And right now, because the last few years, the trends are a little off. So we're trying to engage as many people as possible, gather as much information as possible, so that when we make that decision about how we want to balance both funding from funds on hand and then borrowing, we not only set the school district up for the sustainability that we're looking for from a financial perspective, but also not burdening our community and not putting our taxpayers in a undue position. Again, the great thing about living here in District 72 is the commercial property. It's the, it's the businesses that are here. They really help keep that tax rate low. I mentioned a couple of board members beforehand, you look, look at districts across Skokie and their tax rates are double what ours are, simply because it's largely residential and there's not as much business there. So businesses are taxed at a higher rate. We gather those, those taxes in and we're going to try and balance all of these different factors to come up with the best financing scenario for the projects. And hopefully that will be, and what we're going to have again, like I said, the next few weeks, we'll have a town hall where Elizabeth Hennessy will be here to present this information, answer any questions the community may have, and then we'll be able to make a, a decision here in the next few months about what we want to do. I can speak very generally, is any questions that you may have, but I think.
So, so the timeframe for decision-making, we're really looking at that November board meeting. You know, we're hoping to have all these pieces in place so that we can present a sound financial plan and so that the board can make some decisions about what your comfort level is, you know, what our needs are as a district for their students and to maintain our programs in the manner that we want to maintain them. And then we will be moved from there. So October, there probably won't be too much discussion, just some updates. And then November will really be the meeting where we're going to have to make some decisions about all of this. Okay?
Is that going to be the plan as well as the funding and?
Yeah, in November, we need the board to vote on what, if any, of the project you want to do. I'm hoping that you understand our need for space and that a part of the project minimally will be approved. And then there will be a dollar amount attached to that. And then we need to decide how to fund it. And so like Jeff said, that it will probably be through a combination of using some of our accumulated fund balance, but it will also be with some borrowing. Okay?
We'll also, at that time, approve a construction manager, which we'll talk about in our, in our report, but construction manager will be tasked with managing the project and helping keep costs and managing costs of the project as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeff? All good? Okay, well, thank you very much for filling in and doing the best. We have a lot of information here, which we can continue to plow through. But I think if we could perhaps be part of that town hall and hear it from, no offense, the expert, then, then, then we'll just have a, an even better picture ready for those decisions in November. Okay, so the final administrative report is board policies. And for the benefit of our newer board members, I just wanted to just run through what, what this exactly is. You saw in your packet that there was this lengthy document from the organization called PRESS. We subscribe to PRESS as a district, which means that they assess our, our policy and they review our policy according to what needs to change due mainly to new legislation. They also are in the habit of reviewing all our policies every five years. So even if there is no change in legislation, they actually pull it every five years, take a good look at it and make sure that there are no other changes that need to happen or no better language that could be used. So we rely on them a lot for guiding us on our policy. There is usually a big packet like this around this time of year because much of the legislation was passed towards the end of, of the June time, end of session at May and acts are coming in, new laws are coming in in, in June and July. And sometimes that spills over into needing new changes to policy. The good news is this time around, when I went through this entire packet, was that there was very, very little changes, which is a lot easier for us. So I won't go through absolutely everything, but basically the only ones that really need to have made any kind of changes is two column 10, which is adding new language because of the new a new law around the meeting of public bodies in the case of a public health and emergency. Obviously, that came out of, of COVID, that we have that option of meeting remotely. On two column 130, there is some additional text relating, after the five year, the year relating to the board, board's direction to the superintendent of policy. Two column 240 has expanded the use of all pronouns. All policy should include all pronouns. Most of them are unchanged. Most of them are five-year reviews. That's, that's pretty much it. There is six column 160 has some text about sort of parent involvement in transitional bilingual education program. Actually, one of the main significant ones was some six colon two, two, three, five, which is additional language clarifying exactly what an electronic network is. Obviously, that's something that's a moving target. And I understand that the, the, the policy actually involves language such as sort of, you know, including but not limited to, which means that as new technology comes along, those would also be covered by this policy. So it expands the explanation of exactly what electronic network means. That's literally about it. I'm, I'm sure you had a good look through yourself. If there is any questions, we can raise them at this time, but I think we got up extremely lightly this time. There's literally hardly anything that's changed. Most of the time I'm reading here, policy is unchanged, five-year review, policy is unchanged. So really not much to approve, but if there are any questions about them, then please go ahead. And we only have to do this about two, maybe three times a year, depending on changes in the law. Everybody good with that? Excellent. Oh, and I should have explained it by the bigger. We always look at them one month and then they are actually approved the following month. So you have a whole month to look and read and learn and whatever else. Okay, so moving on to board committees and representatives, the first one on my list here is Buildings, Grounds and Transportation Committee, Ms. Lenoi.
Do you have? So, thank you. We met with Jeff and Casio and Cindy to discuss the, the plan for the building. And Jeff shared with us that there's going to be an RF queue out for construction management firms. They've solicited bids from 11 companies and I think they're going to be getting bids back from, I think, is it H??
Right now, yes. Right now, we're referring to the 11.
Yep. So that's, that's going well, I think. And so the other thing that I was really excited about is we toured the new buses. They're really cool. They have cameras all around, so the bus driver can see the students in the back. They have a, a spot where you can bring wheelchairs in and out very easily. Yeah, I thought it was really great. And it has air conditioning. Yeah, things that I didn't grow up with on buses. And seatbelts. Also didn't grow up with those.
Well, they've been around for a while, but the air conditioning definitely is a new innovation. And it has that new vinyl smell in it as well.
Well, and I, just a little tiny correction for the good of the public and everyone who's here, the bus that you toured
Yeah.
was air-conditioned.
Oh, okay.
So we have, so we have a fleet of six. Air conditioning is, is a fairly high price tag on buses.
Oh, that's right.
So, so I just don't want anyone to think that their children are on air-conditioned buses when they are not. The bus six is typically deployed for some of our, our younger students, but also for some of our special education students that have really specific needs in terms of temperature control. It's also the handicap lift bus, so that any students that are wheelchair-bound can be transported to and from school by the district. So just a small point of clarification.
Small but important. The bus drivers would like air conditioning, for sure. Yeah. I bet.
Cool. Anything else, Shereen?
No, that's all.
Great, thank you very much. So next on my list is the Education Technology Committee, Ms. Downing.
Yeah, so DeeDee and I met with administrators and two of the sort of support personnel, the psychologist and the case manager or special director.
Coordinator.
Yeah. And we, basically what I loved is that our admin can share at this meeting the way that they share with us in a smaller group. So you're hearing all of the reports that we hear, so that transparency is super evident. It's a place for us to ask questions, all of which are always answered. And basically, it's just a highlight of what you guys already shared. The website, we hope, is going to be out in October. The KDA4 kids showed kind of the greatest need for the interventions, which we had already approved. So those are in place, groups are made, kids will be getting their services by the end of September, which is outstanding. The NTDSI presentation on ability equity, I think, is fantastic. Also, that, I don't have much else that you guys didn't already cover. The reading program that we hired, I asked a lot about that. It just sounds like educationally, things are running, and that is what I find amazing, is that that whole list of the extras that are going on, I feel like our students don't really know that's going on. It's truly behind the scenes. Like, there's a sense of like calm and normalcy and I'm going here and I'm learning this and I'm reading that. And I think that's huge. So it was a really successful meeting and we'll have one again next six weeks or so.
I'm good. Okay, great, thanks for that. Ed Redd is me. I just wanted to let you know that the, this coming Friday is the Ed Redd kickoff lunch. And they've actually introduced a remote option now. So if you did want to tune into the meeting, just let me know and I can connect you with Arabid, Ed Redd, and she can connect you with the link. I'm on the fence a little bit myself about whether I'll attend in person because I've heard that they're actually going to be in quite a small room and there's like 90 plus people going. So I may just join remotely myself as well. But, but that's this coming Friday. If anybody's free between about 12 and two and wants to tune in, they're welcome to. Just let me know. There was a survey sent out by Ed Redd in September to all the school districts, the members, asking for their sort of key legislative interests, you know, what, what is most important to them. And obviously from that, Ed Redd will be formulating exactly what they work on this year. The initiatives that they will be working on will be really announced at this kickoff meeting on Friday. The speaker on Friday is Ram Bilabalam, who is our representative. So I'm looking forward to hearing from him. And that's about it. I mean, I think we're really at the kickoff stage with Ed Redd. Once we have the meeting on Friday, they'll have a clearer direction of, as to what they're really going to concentrate on. And I hope to bring you more information about what's coming up in the, the, the September, the, the full session. So that's it for me. NTDSI, back to you, Nora.
Good Lord, it's busy. I have, I just have to say that I'm super distracted by any like side conversations. There's some sort of like acoustic going on. So just know that sometimes I can't hear what's going on if you guys are chatting out there. I just have to say that because I'm trying to concentrate. All right, so it's like echoing to me. The NTDSI representative is me. We have 20, no, we have 18 kids being serviced at Fairview through NTDSI supports. So we have kids in different satellite programs around and we're constantly talking about ways to make more space and keep our kids in-house. And NTDSI is providing lots and lots of services with all of their different OT. We have some deaf and hard of hearing assistance. We have behavior management assistance and they're an amazing partnership to have. On their opening day, they had a discussion about you could do a book, a podcast or a movie club over the summer that they put with an equity focus. And then their staff, everybody from the lunchroom, all the way through bus drivers, teachers got together and had kind of like talking sessions about it, which I thought was a great idea for us to talk about. They are offering vaccination clinics once the under 12 are being offered. So to get their families in, it's so much easier for the kids and the families to just go to NTDSI and get their vaccinations. So I think that's awesome. They're watching, as soon as approval happens, they're going to offer that. There are only five staff members there that are unvaccinated, they work with a very sensitive population. So those five staff members getting weekly tested. So she said COVID protocols, they feel are going great. So those five staff members getting weekly tested. So she said COVID protocols, they feel are going great. They love having the kids back in the building. And there is a cohort of seed, the seed program through NTDSE, which is just the Niles Township that the director, Taryn Kendrick, started. I will be participating in that for a second time. I didn't completely graduate the first time because my schedule got busy. So I start tomorrow. Looking forward to, to that and, and having it being tailored to our population in our area, I think is going to be fantastic. So many of you know I am a special education teacher, so being part of the NTDSE board is very close to my heart and passion. So I'm excited to see all the great things going on there.
Great, thank you. And last but not least is Diana, do you have a report from?
Actually, I covered.
Oh, you did?
Right? So, and, and really KJL covered all of the PTA meeting. There really was not much more to add. But on behalf of the board, I did share updates from the August board meeting since Diana was unable to make it.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're done with our committee reports. Next item is a Freedom of Information request. I can report that there were two Freedom of Information requests received in this last month and they were both handled. Information items and correspondence. Mr. Secretary, please go ahead.
Yes, there, there was one item of correspondence. The board received a message following our last board meeting on August eighteenth. It was from Fairview parent Peter Sotera, expressed, who expressed concern about Fairview's plan for the shield testing.
Thank you. I had a conversation with Dr. Whitaker over the last few weeks about the the fact that we are receiving emails as a board. And it really was just for the benefit of the audience to clarify the procedure in which we're handling that now because we are subject to the Open Meetings Act, which means that three or more board members cannot communicate outside of a, a meeting about board business. So for a board member to reply all to an inquiry from the public would contravene the Open Meetings Act. So obviously, if there was a an issue raised by an email that was sent to the board and the board member had a particular opinion that they wanted to express, they're free to contact either myself or the superintendent to voice that opinion and then that will be incorporated into the reply that goes back to that member of the public. If the issue raised in the sender's email merits action to be taken by the staff or administration at the school, the superintendent will coordinate that. If the sender's email requires a response, the superintendent and board president will liaise on a response. And it will include any and all input from the other board members that has been expressed to them. And the reply will come from the superintendent and BCC to all board members because that is a legitimate communication. It is not a communication between board members. It's from the superintendent. So just to clarify, the, the public could be reminded that when they send an email to the entire board, it will be forwarded to the entire board from the assistant, the superintendent's assistant. And they will receive a response. It will come from the superintendent. But that response will include any opinions expressed by other board members. And obviously, the process for this, the fact that we're collating responses and opinions are being made, means that it may take more than a day for a member of the public to receive an actual response to their email inquiry. So and lastly, the public should be aware that all letters and emails to the board are summarized and made public at the next board meeting, as you just heard from our board secretary. So I'm really saying this for the benefit of the public, but also the benefit of the board members because we have new board members. So if you see an email that comes from a member of the public, you know not to do reply or if you have thoughts about it, by all means, express it to Dr. Whitaker or myself and we will work on a response. And for the point of view of the public, please understand you may not get a response within hours. It may take a day or more to collate that response. But the effort of that is that it will be a reasonable response and it will include any opinions from any board members. Okay? So that was just a point of clarification. So moving on. Public comment. So at this point, the members of the public have an opportunity to share comments with the board on matters that are in the purview of the board. I prepared something to read this time. The public is reminded of board policy two colon two, two colon thirty, which is public participation at the Board of Education meetings. And the summary of the policy is that we will allow a minimum of thirty minutes for comment if needed, and there will be a twenty-minute minimum on any one subject if needed. Members of the public are required to identify themselves and speak for a maximum of three minutes. The board secretary will keep time. When the speaker has thirty seconds of their time remaining, the board secretary will inform the speaker that they have thirty seconds to close their comment. Speakers that have addressed the board on the same subject in the past two months can be denied the opportunity to speak on the same subject. Both speakers and other audience members are reminded that they're required to conduct themselves with respect and stability towards others in line with the board policy eight column thirty, which pertains to conduct a person's while on school property. So with that said, are there any members of the public that wish to address the board?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Palmer and I'm a member, I'm a resident of District seventy-two. I have two kids who go to school here. I have one thank you and a few suggestions. Thank you for getting the, the shield testing up and running so quickly. I imagine that was a lot of work on your part. I did want to suggest that for those who didn't initially opt out, we then got an email asking us to officially opt in within twenty, about a little more than twenty-four hours and that doing so required like printing out a permission sheet and signing it and either scanning it and emailing it back or turning it in. So that seems like kind of a, like a high barrier for some Fairview families, like maybe they don't have a printer. So I just want to encourage you, if, if there are families who like who didn't opt out at the beginning, who you think might want to do the shield testing, but they didn't turn in their form, maybe that's why. Does that make sense? Okay, two comments about board meetings. I would like to suggest that like District two nineteen, that you maybe move the public comments earlier in the meeting. I think I know that by having them later in the meeting, you have a captive audience for all of the business. I promise that we will watch the board meetings online. You'll have us as an audience anyway. But it's, it's hard for those of us, like who want to put our kids to bed, to stay so late at night and not know when the comments are starting. So friendly suggestion there. If you, I think also, if you move the comments earlier, you would actually get a wider span of people who speak. You wouldn't see me speaking at every meeting because other people would come and speak. You, you would have more people participating. Oh, and then the last thing I wanted to say is I just started the seed training for the coming year. It's really super. And I would commend it to all of you on the board, if you haven't done it. I also would like to recommend that all the administrators do seed training. And what I find valuable in it is the way that it's helping me sort of live with discomfort. And I think in questions of equity, it's really important that people learn to, to, to feel discomfort instead of shutting down to sort of move through it. So I just want to commend that training to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Johnson. I'm a parent of a Fairview seventh grader. First of all, I'd also like to thank the board and Dr. Whitaker for proceeding with the shield testing at Fairview. Vaccines and masks are proven ways to end this pandemic and shield testing is going to help protect the children who can't get the vaccine yet. And it's going to help get all these kids to stay in school if they are unfortunately exposed. I'd also like to request that the board consider moving the public comment section to the board meetings. At the board meetings, the beginning of the meeting. Really, I only started attending these meetings and becoming more involved once my child no longer needed me to put him to bed. And this would really benefit parents of younger children to become more involved at Fairview when their children are still small. My son will be graduating in two years and, you know, you want the kindergarten parents here. And lastly, I'd also really encourage the board to implement anti-racist training for all the admin and school board members. And really, you know, within the next two years is vital. This, this is so important in education right now. This issue of equity, of making sure that all of the children's needs are being met. And, you know, beyond diversity is a great option. Also, the Illinois Holocaust Museum offers courageous conversation workshops specifically for educators. Your eighth graders, take a trip here. Maybe it's time that you guys too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Helen Levinson. I'm a resident of District seventy-two. I have a daughter in seventh grade. So just wanted to congratulate the board on the recognition of the ASISB. I think that's wonderful. And I want to give a shout out to the advisory program. I don't know if, if it's Mike LaPataca that put that together, but Leila loves it. I think it's great. I think it's wonderful that the kids are starting off their day talking about goals. So kudos to Mike and everyone else that put that together. And I also want to congratulate and welcome our new Director of Community Relations, Jordan. I think it's great. You've done some amazing things already and I'm excited to see what else you have to bring to the community. And as far as public comments, I actually like them at the end of the meeting, only because I get to hear what the topics are and the agenda. And it gives me some insight as to what's going on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Okay. So moving on to our action items this evening, we just have two action items. The first one is, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two district budget?
So moved.
Our second. We've already had the presentation from Mr. Fay, but if there's any other final questions or comments from anyone? Nope. Did a great job. Thank you. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Ms. Boujdi?
Yes.
The budget is approved. And we have another action item to approve the resignation of a certified staff member. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, this was already discussed in closed sessions. So if the secretary could please call the roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Ms. Downing? I vote yes. Ms. Boujdi?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes. Okay. That's also approved. So getting through it, items for future consideration. Is there anybody that wishes to mention anything for future consideration? I just wanted to remind everybody about the ISB conference in November. It is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but like I said before, no one ever goes on the Sunday. But I will be going on the Friday, Saturday, Friday. I'm actually doing a, a training. It's about equity in schools and training. And then Saturday, there are the main sessions. The keynote speakers on Friday afternoon and then also Saturday morning. I highly recommend it. I've been to every single conference in my time on the board. And I honestly can say that the experience I've gained, the experience to do what I'm doing right now of running a meeting and the understanding of how a board should be run, how a meeting should be run, the board business, how it should be conducted, what you can do, what you can't do, what's in your purview, what's not in your purview. I learned all that from the ISB and I won't be around forever. So somebody needs to do it. I really would recommend it. If you want to join me, I will definitely be going down on Friday and Saturday. So.
Shameless plug, that Friday, I'll be presenting with some colleagues on financial transparency.
There you go.
So it would be nice to have a board member or two there to hear nice things about.
I'll be there with my flag.
It'll be myself and four other districts just talking about how financials are communicated to get it to communities. So it's same, same thing we did a couple of years ago. You were there.
I do remember that. Yeah.
Thank you.
It, it, Mary Ann, what's the date?
It's, I'm sorry, it's Friday, the nineteenth and Saturday, the twentieth of November. It's always the weekend before Thanksgiving.
And should we email Drew or should we email Drew?
Yes, please. Yeah, yeah, she can enroll you. No, so the cool thing is, it's always when there's the Christmas parade downtown, you know, when Disney and Santa and that all come through on the Friday, on the Saturday afternoon. And we usually get invited to a reception, either with our lawyers or our architect, maybe, or someone usually invites us to a, a reception on the Friday evening or the Saturday evening. It depends. But that's always fun to go to, too. It's, it's kind of the one perk that we get to be on a board.
Will it be in person this year or?
It is planned to be in person. And I think the good thing is that one reason I'm hesitating about Friday's Ed Redd lunch is because it's like a lunch. Everybody's eating and masks off, but this will be in a huge, it's at the Hyatt downtown and it's absolutely massive and there's much more scope for social distancing and obviously everybody's going to be masked for sure. I think I just feel safer about it altogether. But so yeah, if you want to know anything about it, like I say, I've been every single year that I've been on the board and I can let you know more about it.
And I can forward you the brochure with all of the sessions and kind of how the lineup looks. So you can kind of see what's offered and when.
Go to the ISB website. There's tons of information on that.
I went like my, probably my first or second year and it was really helpful to just meet other board members and realize like what this entails is not easy and, and how to do it. And and just to talk to other districts across the whole state, you hear what they're battling and what they're dealing with. And you realize what a
Little slice of heaven we have.
Yeah. But it's just, it's a great networking space to get other ideas on what other districts are doing too.
Yeah, it's great. So anyway, that was the only thing I wanted to pose with today. So is there anybody else got anything to add? We're good? In that case, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-one? Our motion?
Second.
And could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Downing and Ms. Boujdi?
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you all for coming.